As you bestowed on us, thank you for the opportunities you've given us to live in this land, especially this county. Lord bless all of us and continue to grant us wisdom as we look at the workings of the county. Help us to do things that are fair and just. Now go with us through this meeting and continue your blessings. Amen.
I stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, ungod, indivisible, over lived and just as all. Before I call on Mr. Mashman, if there's anyone here who thinks we may have the Penske matter tonight, it has been withdrawn. So if you're here or this one, you know the Penske matter has been withdrawn. I now call on Mr. Mashman for adjustments to the agenda.
Mr. Chair, the following items have been withdrawn or added to the agenda. As you stated, case number 0709-1, which was the Penske Realty request, has been withdrawn. Also, under administrative matters, item L, request from the Arndell County Property Group or Arndell Broadcasting Incorporated for refund of 542 in conjunction with overpayment of a deed stamp. That has also been withdrawn and will probably be added back to the next agenda. Would like to add the following. Under item K, a part two to that request is approval of a vehicle tracking system. Would also like to add an item R, which is a parking easement agreement between Arndell County, Arndell Memorial Hospital, and FCHC Incorporated. Mr. Chair, those are the adjustments that I have.
Do we have any other additions or corrections to the agenda? If not, do I have a motion to accept the agenda?
Don't move, Mr. Chairman.
You've heard the motion. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. We're now open to reading to public hearing. Mr. Smith.
Mr. Chairman, this is a conditional use request, if you'd like to square it.
Okay. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in regards to this request? Case number 07092, Reginald Kay and Joan A. Ostwald.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, please. You are the issue affirmed or swear that evidence will present to prove the whole
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Board of Commissioners. This request is from Reginald Kay and Joan A. Ostwald, properties located at 912 South Main Street in Troutman. This is just north of exit 42, essentially the corner of Flowerhouse Loop and 21. The requested action is to rezone the property from HB to GB-CUD, and that's General Business Conditional Use District. And we've worked with the applicant to add several conditions onto this property in an effort to mirror our roadway protection overlay that we utilize in other areas of the county. Those conditions essentially will require specific yard setbacks, buffering along 21, or some sort of islanded type of shrub configuration, limited access. The applicant has agreed to limit their access on 21 and to make certain improvements to Flowerhouse Loop to ensure proper and adequate access to the site and limit traffic problems from the Flowerhouse Loop side. All utilities will be buried on the property. There will be at least one paved stubout to the adjoining property to the north to try to promote connectivity. This is the site, and this is the property to the north, and they have agreed to put a stubout to the property just to try and keep as much traffic off of the main roads as possible. It's a little bit under two and a half acres and is currently vacant, but there have been uses on the property in the past. I think the most recent was a mobile home sales lot. This property, when we began this process, we were under the impression and assumptions that this is located in the watershed. However, we have been working with the applicant, and they have certified to us that this property is not located in the watershed, and therefore that will not limit their impervious surface to the degree that we once had expected that it would. The proposed use of the property is for a hotel and a restaurant. The primary reason for making the change is to allow for that hotel to go up to our height limitation in General Business of 50 feet instead of 35 feet, which is what is allowed in HB. The associated traffic, to the best that we can determine at this point, would be about 2,200 trips per day that would be generated from the proposed uses. Now, we're not tying them to this, but that's just an indication of what could come from that. And keep in mind that much of that traffic will be coming directly on and off of Interstate 77. So we wouldn't be feeling a lot of that on the other roads. This property was rezoned in 1998 to HB, and it was in compliance at that time with the exit 42 plan and the development that was taking place at that time. We have been working with the town of Troutman on this particular request, and you've got a letter from the town attached to your staff report that endorses the request and grants water and sewer service as well, with several conditions to which the applicant does meet. Based on all these issues and the fact that we feel like this is a good use of the property and that it does comply with the bulk of the exit 42 study and the development that has taken place in that area now, the staff is recommending approval of the request. And the planning board also recommended approval by a vote of 11 to 0 at their October meeting in favor. This is an aerial shot of the property. There is a car lot on the northern piece just adjacent to this. And as you can see, as of, I believe it was two years ago when this shot was taken, this one's vacant. There's been a lot of clearing on the other side of 21, and as you all know, around exit 42, there's been quite a bit of development. This is looking along Flowerhouse Loop. This is the property that we're talking about, and that's the car lot. This is looking across Flowerhouse to a large vacant piece. This is a house down the road just a little. I think this is Apple Hill Road, if I'm not mistaken. This is an office that was rezoned several years ago, that we had done probably three or four years ago. And I'm not sure what the tenant is, but I know that that is for an office use. This is probably close to the area where the ride-in, ride-out would be for 21, and this is going out towards 77 with the overpass right here. And this is a new development that's taken place in the last couple of years under the town of Troutman's regulations. And I'd be glad to try and answer any questions that you might have.
Mr. Smith, I meant to ask you this earlier. As far as the watershed, Flowerhouse Loop pretty much runs on the ridge, so anything that would be to the east of Flowerhouse Loop would not be in the watershed. Is that pretty much the place where it breaks?
Based on the information that we've been looking at, I think you're right. And this piece directly drains right to 21 and definitely does not drain back towards the lake.
Okay. Are there any additional questions from the board members?
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Thank you.
Do we have anyone in the audience who wishes to speak for this request?
I'll be very brief. I'm John Massey. I'm here with Mr. Ostwald. In view of the recommendations of the planning board and the staff, we don't really have any comments we want to offer at this time, but we will stand here to answer any questions or respond to any objections we may hear.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Massey? Thanks, sir. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak against this request? If not, I'll close the public hearing on this request, and we'll entertain motions from the board.
Mr. Chairman, I believe that we amend the exit 42 future land use plan.
Okay, you heard the motion. Any questions? All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next motion.
I would further move that we rezon this portion of property from highway business to General Business Conditional Use District and adopt the findings of fact related to it.
Okay. Any questions regarding that motion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Was there a third motion there?
I think I see.
That was it?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. We appreciate your comment. Mr. Smith.
The next item that I have tonight deals with Article 13 of our zoning ordinance, and this is the special requirements for facilities located on or adjacent to Lake Norman. So essentially, we're dealing with piers and lakeborne structures. This is a staff-initiated request. We have been administering pier and dock and marina standards on the lake for many, many years, definitely since countywide zoning was into play. And since the beginning of that, we have had a number of problems with clarity and confusion and actually the administration of the actual ordinance itself. The way that a typical scenario goes is that someone who is wanting to build a dock on Lake Norman would come to our office, receive a zoning permit, go to Duke Power and get the authority to build on that property, then come back and get a building permit. During that time, there is the potential for many changes in the way those standards are administered. Our standards do not necessarily mirror those of Duke Power's. In some cases, we are more stringent; in some cases, they are. What we're proposing is just to remove our authority on docks and piers and these structures that are in the lake and allow Duke Power to administer them as they are currently doing. Ultimately, they are the final say when it comes to these types of structures. The only real authority that we would recommend keeping is the issuance of zoning permits just to allow someone to know that they can build a pier and obviously the issuance of a building permit, which is a state-mandated permit. I think that this situation would work out much better. It would cut out the confusion that the residents run into, because I've always considered us and our process to be a speed bump in that process. The biggest changes that I see, or the biggest differences that I see, are the fact that for non-residential facilities, there is the opportunity to go beyond our 120-foot limit. That's not a given. Duke Power will review on a case-by-case basis these applications for something that would be more than 120 feet, but they would have to make a special determination to go beyond the 120 and go out to 200 feet, and this is coming from their shoreline management guidelines. That's probably the biggest difference that I see in us administering this process, and I would fully endorse, and the planning board has endorsed this as well, the amendment to the zoning ordinance. And I'd be glad to try and answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Do we have anyone in the audience wishing to speak in favor or against this request, this amendment? If not, we'll close up the public hearing. Do I have a motion to accept this amendment?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. It's been moved. Do we have questions regarding the motion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Those opposed likewise. Thank you. Now moving along to administrative matters, Mr. Mashman.
Mr. Chair, the following items are under consent agenda. Item A is a request from LPH Development LLC for approval to develop under the high-density guidelines in the WS4 Protected Area Watershed Section 507 Watershed Ordinance, and the location is Buffalo Shoals Road. Item B is approval of budget amendment number 20 for the appropriation of fund balance for the FY 2007 school capital outlay settlement based on actual revenues received during the fiscal year. Item D is approval of budget amendment number 21 for the acceptance of a technology grant for $174,471 from the North Carolina Department of Transportation for the purchase of automatic vehicle locators and mobile data computers. Item E is approval of budget amendment number 22 for the acceptance of FY 2007 Viper Voice Interoperability Plan for Emergency Responders. This program is a program that we've entered into agreement with the state of North Carolina, and the funding is $56,711.88, and will be used to purchase radios, and will be held by the state of North Carolina Highway Patrol until such time as the radios are purchased on our behalf. Item F is approval of the 2007 Fireman's Relief Fund Board of Trustees. Item G is approval of budget amendment number 23 to accept and allocate $15,000 in aid to county's funding from the General Assembly. Item H is a request from the Health Department for approval to apply for a Cape B Rentals Charitable Trust grant of $30,000. And item I is also a request from the Health Department for approval of budget amendment number 24 to accept an increase in Healthy Carolinians funding in the amount of $2,048. Item J is also a request from the Health Department for approval to apply for a $10,000 Susan G. Coman grant. Item K has two parts. The first part is Sheriff's Department for approval of budget amendment number 25 for the usage of seized funds to purchase a rollback truck that will be assigned to vehicle maintenance, vehicle services. A second part of that is approval of a lease agreement for vehicle tracking system. The agreement will be for three years and the amount of $450 a month. Item M is a request for approval to allow the county manager to respond to the Office of Emergency Management pertaining to Carolina Medical Center's redesignation as a Level One trauma center. Item N is a request from Duke Power for approval of a right-of-way agreement resulting from the North Carolina Department of Transportation broadly school road improvements. A power line needs to be relocated. This is on school property or property that is used for the schools, and have discussed this with the school system, and they have concurred with this. Item O is approval of the Children Home of Arndell County Incorporated's request for a waiver of solid waste disposal fees that will be resulting from the construction of a new building. I would like to add, just for clarification, that to children, the county does fund the children homes of Arndell County and have a contract with them to provide services to our Department of Social Services. Item P is approval of a memorandum of lease termination in conjunction with the 1997 refinancing by the Arndell Memorial Hospital Incorporated. The 1997 loan has been paid, and the 1952 lease needs reinstatement, and that was a mechanism that had to occur prior to the funding being available in 1997. Item Q is approval of the October 16, 2007 minutes. Item R is an agreement park, well, I'm sorry, that's going to come off. We'll be discussing that later. So that concludes our consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Mashman. Do we have any questions regarding consent agenda? Do we have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, the motion is in place. Do we have any questions regarding that motion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Those opposed likewise. We'll go back to item number C.
Ms. Blumenstein will handle that item.
Okay.
Thank you. In the summer of 2006, the School Facilities Task Force convened to develop a recommendation of projects for the Phase II school construction projects. The task force then presented to you its recommendations, and both school systems proceeded with their design work and other pre-construction requirements. Since that time, we have considered different financing mechanisms for these school projects. At this time, it's the task or the group's recommendation to propose to issue certificates of participation of approximately $106 million, with $80 million to fund Arndell State's schools Phase II projects, and $26 million for more school graded school system. Of course, the exact size of the issuance won't be determined until we get closer to the sale date. However, there are sufficient funds available within the designated revenue stream for school capital, and this would not require a tax increase. It's our recommendation that the board authorize the county manager and I to proceed with the requirements to submit the application to local government commission, appoint Sidley-Auston LLC as bond counsel, and Citigroup as the managing underwriter. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Do we have questions, Ms. Blumenstein? If not, we'll go ahead and entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve this request.
Okay. Other questions regarding the motion? All in favor, say aye.
I'd like to make a comment.
Okay.
At the risk of being labeled anti-school or as a person not caring for our children, I have certain issues with this proposal, the county going into $106 million additional debt without at least some vote from the people. I've been strong supporter of this school system for my whole adult life and for the last 20 years especially, and I have problems of the county indebted herself with this type of debt, this amount of debt. I've been discussing this same issue with people in the school system for the last couple of years. And I would have the assurance that we would probably see a COPS of something, maybe half this, with the remainder being issued on GO bonds, voter-approved GO bonds. I've said many times that I have problems going into debt or voting for COPS that are more than $45 million. I think that's the maximum we've done, or maybe $50 million a couple of years ago. And I still have a problem with spending that kind of money without some voter approval. I don't have a problem with the plan. The schools are in the plan. I support every one of them, and I would support the money for it, but I just don't support the way that we're going about doing this. Thank you.
Any other comments? Motion on the floor?
Mr. Chairman, it is my understanding that this decision was made by our School Facilities Task Force, a force of which you and Mr. Johnson, Susan, and Mr. Mashman all serve on this task force. And it was my understanding that it was the recommendation of the task force that we move ahead under these terms and conditions.
That is correct.
It was, the reason started, Ms. Tice, you're right. A little elaboration, it started out as the complete task force where we dealt only with the facility needs. Once we established what those needs were, and they're listed in here as far as what schools are going to be spent on, we decided, and Mr. Norman, I think, will concur with what I'm saying, we wanted to keep that process of deciding what schools were needed divorced from any discussion about money or how we're going to pay for it. We would decide that later. Subsequent to deciding what the priorities were, we were asked to sit down and have a committee with Mr. Norman and myself, Mr. Mashman, Ms. Blumenstein, Dr. Holliday was there, Kay Foote was there, Dr. Cash from the school board was there, Rob Jackson and Kenny Miller were in advisory capacity. And we looked at the public-private partnership. We looked at GO bonds. We looked at COPS. We looked at a combination thereof. And Ms. Blumenstein, if I misstate anything, you feel free to correct me. The public-private partnership, we think that legislation needs some work before it'll be beneficial to the county. We looked at splitting the thing up between COPS and GO. There was a brief discussion about that, not lengthy, because Ms. Tice, and you said in these things, and Mr. Norman has or will, and I have, when you go into these meetings to sell these bonds, the first time I walked in there, for heaven's sakes, it didn't take this many lawyers then World War II.
That's true.
I mean, they're lined around the hall making, I don't know what they make. Some of them flying here from New York City says they ain't making 10 bucks an hour, I guarantee you. So you're going to do that twice? Well, you know, the more times you do that, the more of these guys you got flying out of Douglas Airport in Armani suit with a briefcase full of your money. And so I think when you look at it in totality, these projects are needed. I can understand some apprehension about borrowing this kind of money, but if you want to propose a GO bond that doesn't require a tax increase, and I don't like debt either, but it's going to pass. The public is going to vote for it if it doesn't require a tax increase. So if you put 40 million there that the voters approve, and you put 40 million on a COPS, you still 80 million bucks in debt. Difference is, you've paid a whole bunch of lawyers twice. The other aspect was, on more than one of these projects, you've already got a construction crew mobilized, they're sitting there. I don't remember the terminology, Mr. Mashman, but Rob Jackson said it would eliminate any mobilization fee, and he could get them under some continuance of contract that would bind them to continue the project. bind them to continue the project without additional expense, so you'd, you'd save the mobilization expense. And all things considered, when you look at 80 million dollars, it is a lot of money. But we felt like the cost to do it otherwise was substantially higher than what we're proposing. And 80 million dollars, while it is a lot of money, in, in the context of a, of an economy, a local economy that is dynamic as ours is and growing as fast as ours is, 80 million dollars is, won't buy what it used to buy.
In addition to that, 80 million, we had $26 million for Moore'sville credit school system.
That's correct, yes.
And in addition to that, a year prior to this decision, in fact, more than a year prior to this decision, we had task force from citizens throughout the county who met on a regular basis to make this decision about the school system and also to, from time to time, we tweaked this plan. So it's not really the original plan, we had to go back and tweak it because of the growth and the changing of demographics. So this process just didn't start yesterday, been going on for more than a year.
Could I respond?
Sure.
Question, the comment was made, is all through this whole process, every time that comes up about how we're going to fund the process, it says, well, we, we don't discuss that now, we'll put this off till later. This has been the process all the way through this, this, well, we're looking at facilities now, we'll, we'll determine how we're going to fund it at a later date. Well, as of September or whenever it was, we approved the 90 million dollars to go ahead with it. I've talked with members of the school system at that time on how they were planning on funding it. Even at that time, when we approved the 90 million to go ahead, it was never determined to me exactly how it's going to be funded. Now, I'm not saying that I would have supported, but I have my opportunity now to state where I feel about it. I don't think we should go in debt that much without, of other people, and that's just my personal beliefs.
And Mr. Williams, I respect that, but in fairness to the school, and I've had my differences with Dr. Holliday, but in fairness to them, and I think Mr. Norman and Ms. Blumenstein and Mr. Mashburn will agree with me, they, they said that splitting the thing up was agreeable to them, that they didn't have a problem with that. The problem is, when you split it up, you wind up paying a lot more money.
Okay, any additional comments?
Nothing, other than the fact that about four years ago, we were told we could do over $100 million, it wouldn't cost us anything, and we made fun of the persons at that time and now we're doing it, so. To me, it was right after all.
Well, I have great respect for Susan Blumenstein and she says that we can do this without a tax increase. And she's never steered me in the wrong direction before, so I have to, have to put my trust in her figures.
Well, I'm speaking for someone whose daughter's going to be in one of these new classrooms, so when I go home tonight, I'm probably going to be in trouble, but I still, I have strong feelings about it.
I, I understand and I appreciate, I do.
Uh, the motion's on the floor. Any additional discussion? If not, all in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Next item, item number R, Mr. Mashburn.
Chairman, may I get a chance?
Ma'am? Did you vote, Mr. Williams?
I didn't vote, it goes in the positive.
Okay, so you have four positives?
Five.
That'd be five.
Five, that'd be five, okay. Okay.
Mr. Norman, I'm going to call Mr. Pope to discuss item R, which is the parking easement agreement between Iredell County, Iredell Memorial Hospital, and FCHC Incorporated.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Pope. The background on this is, in about 1952, Iredell County acquired the property upon which Iredell Memorial Hospital is now located. And we entered into a long-term lease with a nonprofit corporation called Iredell Memorial Hospital Incorporated. That lease was either 99 or 100 years, I don't remember exactly, and that was done about 1952. So there's about 45 more years left on the lease. Recently, Iredell Memorial was able to acquire a tract, which I think was three acres, on the corner of Hartness, Brookdale, and Oakdale. And the purpose of acquiring that property was to erect a large medical office building to attract health care providers to the hospital. What's contemplated is a three-story, 45,000 square foot building, which will add, I've forgotten the number, but I think it's approximately $10 million to the tax base of the county. People who are financing that want some, need, because of city regulations, they need cross parking easement. They need to be able to park on the property that the hospital, that the county has leased to the hospital. There really isn't any problem with that, that's up to the hospital during the term of the lease. What they want to know is that they can continue to park there after the hospital lease expires until the lease on the building expires, which could be another, I believe, 10 years beyond the time the hospital lease expires. So we've been negotiating with them to create a document that's called a parking easement agreement that allows, that would allow the hospital to, I'm sorry, the owners of the building to park on the hospital property if the hospital lease expires and the county doesn't renew it for a period of time until the lease on the building expires. And we've come up with a term that I think I'm pretty comfortable with, and that is, they would, in that event, they would pay rent to us. And they would pay rent that's a current equivalent of $200 per space per year, and that would be adjusted from time to time, each five years into the lease, if it goes that far. I, I think it's, it's fairly straightforward, they, of course, didn't want to pay that much. Joel and I have been kicking this document back and forth for several weeks and they are ready to go or no go. And I felt since we had the document in shape that I was comfortable with and comfortable recommending to you, that I asked Joel if we could get it on the agenda tonight and he has added it to the agenda. I think you have copies of it. I'd be glad to try to answer any questions you might have, but I think it's a pretty straightforward document and it's one I don't have any reservation about.
Do we have any questions for Mr. Pope? Do we have a motion to accept the parking easement agreement?
I move.
I move. Any questions regarding the motion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Announcement of acts occurring on boards and commissions, community alternative programs for disabled adults, six announcements, tram and planning and zoning board, ETJ, one announcement, Crossroads Behavior Healthcare Board, one announcement, recreational advisory board, four announcements. Appointments to boards and commissions, State for Planning Board, ETJ, one appointment.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to table this appointment until our next meeting.
Okay, motion to table? All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Adult Care at Home Community Advisory Committee, two appointments. Do we have anyone for this board?
Motion to table, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, motion to table? All in favor, please say aye. Nursing Home Advisory Committee, five appointments.
Motion to table.
Motion to table? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Personnel Advisory Committee, one appointment.
Mr. Chairman, I'd nominate Mr. Jeff Stutz.
Okay, Mr. Jeff Stutz, any additional nominees?
If the nominations be closed, then appoint Mr. Stutz for acclamation.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Animal grievance committee, one announcement.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Sandy Andrews.
Sandy Andrews. Any additional nominees? All in favor of Ms. Andrews, please say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Unfinished business, do we have any unfinished business?
Public comment period, we don't have that tonight. How about new business tonight?
Okay, none. County manager report, Mr. Mashburn?
I have no report tonight, I do have an item for a closed session now.
Okay. Motion to go in closed session on the GS 143, that's 318.11A4, economic development, and GS 143, that's 318.11A5, property acquisitions. All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay. There's no action to be taken as a result of some nice closed session. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Motion to adjourn. On the favor say aye.
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 Aye.